Six o'clock, Dunwoody City Council meeting. I call this meeting to order. Can someone find Stacy, please? Okay. I call this meeting to order. Seeing no objection, the meeting is called to order. Councilman Lambert, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public comment. Is there anyone present that would like to make a public comment? Ginger, can you check online, please?
If you would like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. We will have another public comment at the end of the meeting. Commissioner Ted Terry has joined us this evening. For those of you who don't know, Commissioner Terry was elected county commissioner at large, District Six, at, I guess, in the summer, and began service in January. And so, welcome, Commissioner Terry. All of Dunwoody Falls and Commissioner Terry's district. So, please. You can, that's fine. Wait one second. Ginger's coming to make sure it's hooked up.
Is it on already? Yeah, I turned on to hit the press to turn on. Okay, excellent. All right. Well, hello. Good evening. Very light agenda. This is great. So, I get like an hour to speak. Is that right?
Two weeks ago, it was five hours.
Okay, good. All right. Get a break here. And hello, everyone at home. Well, yeah, thank you so much, Mayor Deutsch and the City Council for inviting me and to, you know, really just bring greetings because I am drinking from a fire hose. And there's a lot going on in DeKalb County, as y'all know. And I think, number one, my commitment to y'all is to represent you. I think that is the number one goal in our representative democracy, is to get your input, your feedback, to co-create, you know, the future of our shared DeKalb. And as a former mayor and member of the DeKalb Municipal Association, I've met many of y'all over the years and some I haven't had a chance to get to know. But I look forward to getting to know y'all. And so, I'm very cognizant of the dynamic between the cities and the municipalities and the county government. And then, layering on the other complexities of our school board and school systems and the CIDs and the Chamber of Commerce and all the other entities and all the other meetings that we all, you know, might get invited to or maybe want to attend, but have all these other things going on. And so, I'm going to try to share the load, I think, and I want y'all to do the same as well. And so, I think if we have a normal check-in, opportunities to meet one-on-one. I think I'm trying to get with Joe for coffee and then Mr. Lambert. I think also we're getting maybe coffee this week, I think. So, open invitation for us to do that in person, socially distant or Zoom, just to share your ideas, thoughts on ways that we can be working together. I'll just give a quick few remarks to sort of what my role is currently shaping up to be in DeKalb. We have, as y'all know, the committee system in DeKalb County at the Board of Commissioners. And so, I am on the Operations Committee. I chair the Operations Committee as well as PWI, also known as Public Works and Infrastructure. And so, the operations, think PDK Airport, think the operations of the actual government, think elections. And in fact, actually tomorrow, we'll be introducing a resolution to reform the election stakeholder working group that was formed after the 2018 election that did a lot of work through that group as well as Operations Committee to make sure that the 2020 election was run smoothly. And obviously, there were some, a lot of things that we learned in 2020 that I think that we can continue to build upon for the 2021 elections. Do y'all have elections this year? Okay, yeah, every city has some version of their council or mayor up. And so, to ensure that, obviously, our elections are safe and secure, that they're fair, and that there, of course, is access for everyone who is eligible and legally allowed to vote. So, that's very exciting because I think that is literally going to be the opportunity for us to work with the Republican Party, the DeKalb Democratic Party, the Board of Commissioners. We've added an additional little slot in there for a representative from the DeKalb Municipal Association, since clearly y'all care about how elections are run because you have to run them for your elections. And so, I thought that'd be an important addition. So, I think we're going to kind of lean on the DeKalb Municipal Association members to, you know, help figure out who that representative might be. But that is hopefully going to be a few months of work to sort of make sure that we're good and set for the municipal elections this November and then probably some work later on in the year as we go into the 2022 elections. So, I'm excited about that just because I think it's important that we continue to improve, innovate, and really provide as much transparency as well as opportunity in our voting system. So, look forward to getting some invitations and opportunities to participate in that. On the PWI side, the Public Works and Infrastructure side, that is water and sewer, it's roads and drainage, it's infrastructure. You know, some things y'all obviously handle as a city, but clearly, the water and sewer is going to be, you know, top, top issue for, I think, everyone that lives in DeKalb. And so, if you have been following recently, the commission has approved the basic, you know, the CIP, we're calling it. The, what does CIP stand for? The, it's the Infrastructure Program. It's the Capital Improvement Program. Thank you. The Capital Improvement Program. So, over a billion dollars in projects. And they run the gamut from fixing and building major trunk lines, you know, the kind that are, you know, as tall as a six-foot man and wide, as well as maintenance, sort of the outstanding sort of issues that we're seeing really in all parts of the cap counting. That is going to be a very long process. And I believe the next step that you'll be hearing about from us is how we look at actually funding the over $1 billion in improvements. It's no secret that for decades, the maintenance and the improvements that were needed to be made to the system just didn't keep up. And so, we're having to make up for a lot of lost time. I'm not going to make excuses or anything for things that happened before I got here. But all I can say is that moving forward, as a PWI committee member with Commissioner Patrick and Commissioner Lorraine Cochran Johnson, we are staying on it. And one thing I will mention that I thought, I think, is a really important sort of kind of committee rule. Follow the construction item that is over $4 million has to go to audit. And so, we have an independent audit office in DeKalb County whose whole job it is, is to go through every line by line of these contracts before and after to ensure that what they said it was going to cost actually is what it's going to cost. And then, in reviewing it, to make sure it actually was done. And so, as a result, we've had a few contracts that have already come before PWI where the audit committee and the audit office, I'm saying the committee, but it's the actual, it's the office. There's like seven or eight staffers whose job it is to do this auditing, have identified hundreds of thousands of dollars in savings where that line item didn't quite line up with this line item. And so, Mr. John Green is our director. And so, we're leaning on that independent body to be sort of the ground truther for all of this money that we're going to be spending. Because I think that's probably the most important thing, that we have to instill confidence in our rate payers, is we're all paying these water and sewer rates. Pay more for sewer than we do for water. Right? That makes sense. But we want to make sure that the money is going and being used wisely and constructively and efficiently. And so, I think, you know, with that process, as well as the accountability that the committee holds in terms of reviewing every single contract and addressing any concerns that come in terms of repairs or other, you know, issues that y'all see, that is the opportunity for us to make sure that we keep on point and ensure that the work is done. So, stay tuned for kind of that next discussion of how we're actually going to fund it because part of that is addressing a new rate structure. And of course, that will affect all of us. So, we want to make sure that we do that in an equal and equitable way. Also, understanding that if we do not do this work, that consent decree that we have agreed to with the EPA could be in jeopardy. And we could be at risk of millions of dollars more in fines. So, not a really great place to be in and the place to discuss during coming out of a pandemic. But it is something that we have to turn our attention and focus on. And I'll be doing that on PWI. Lastly, I'll just mention that I am going to be having kind of quarterly sort of town hall meetings, a little bit more structured at first, but probably as we go on, a little more open and kind of more, you know, small D democratic. But I am having my first town hall, kind of, we're calling them Talks with Ted. This is my team branding it. And that will be on Wednesday, March 31st, from 6:30 to 7:15, I believe. Six to 7:15. So, would invite everyone who's interested to join that. Only an hour and 15 minutes. I'm going to do a four-hour town hall because we could spend four hours talking about just, you know, PWI stuff if we wanted to. But we're going to go easy on y'all first. So, it's just kind of a broad overview and talk about some of my initiatives around housing, transportation and transit, as well as economic development, criminal justice reform, and environmental resilience. And so, open invitation for y'all to join us for that next Wednesday. And with that, I'll pause. And if there's any questions or comments, I would love to take them.
Okay. Questions? Want me to start? John, do you have anything?
Evening, Ted. Thank you for coming. Let me see. I got a little minor list here. Governmental services. There's a number of governmental services that are shared between the county or the city. Several of them, let me think. The elections were something that you were talking about. I'm not sure if you're aware, but the city of Dunwoody has funded early elections to be held at the Dunwoody Library. Other municipalities nearby don't always want to do that. So, we've made it a, an effort to push that forward. So, we've worked with the DeKalb Board of Elections for the last four or five election cycles. We've tried to make sure that early voting was always available at the Dunwoody Library. And that would then serve everybody in District One, District Seven. I mean, whoever could come to the Dunwoody Library. It was one of our priorities as a council to try to make sure that everybody near us could get a fair and early election. And I know there's a number of conversations happening regarding election changes. And if there's any way that you can assure that we could continue that structure of us possibly funding for early elections, we think that's important to our constituents, your constituents, and everybody.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I think that the big variable that we don't know yet is how, what laws will be enacted at the state legislature. And so, that might, there might be some limitations based on state law, maybe hours, days of the week. It does look according, based on our lobbyists, our contract lobbyists sort of assessment, is that early voting will not be, you know, taken away, but it might be curtailed. And so, I think we're going to have to be creative to ensure exactly what you said, that we continue to provide that service. And if not, try to, I mean, if we have to try to expand it within the sort of narrow confines.
I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that we try really hard to make sure that that service is available to our constituents and those around us. So, I understand I can't always change state rules and regulations, but.
Well, you can email them.
Internally, I just want to make sure you were aware.
Yep.
Constituent services is another one. We have shared responsibility, let's say, on sanitation. You know, DeKalb does a wonderful job for us on sanitation, but every once in a while, they miss a block. Okay? How do you, we on council have pretty good speed dial. We know exactly who to call at sanitation. We can get the trucks rolling. How do you want to be brought into the conversation? Not brought in the conversation, brought in only if DeKalb doesn't serve us within a week or two? Or how, you know, I don't want to overwhelm you with email and communication if not needed, but I also want to make sure I serve your needs. Do you have a preference?
Yeah, absolutely. I would say if it is, if it's an emergency, you know, absolutely. Call, email me and Commissioner Patrick as your members on the board commission. And generally speaking, yeah, I would suggest that directly to the sanitation department would be, make the most sense. But we are here to be the squeaky wheel. So, if you're not getting, you know, the grease, you know, we'll help.
Oh, we appreciate that. Again, it's sanitation, normally a water leak somewhere, both of which we can get trucks rolling pretty quick with the phone numbers and the contacts that we've made through the years. I just want to make sure that I know your wishes as far as communication. It sounds like we're going to get your contact information for your staff members and put them into our Rolodexes and phones and whatever else and use them as needed. But again, I'm only going to use it then as really needed then.
Sure. Yeah, whatever you want. I don't mind. I'm doing this full-time. Just, I should have mentioned that. I'm doing this as a full-time commissioner. So, y'all just, any day of the week, let me know.
Let's see. Interesting to hear about your auditing department. I was not aware. I know there's the brand-new DeKalb County Ethics Office, and that's different from this auditing office.
Yeah.
And you were talking about accountability. I brought up something to Commissioner Patrick when he visited that he was unaware of, that I'm aware of, and that's the accountability and the auditing that actually takes place by the DeKalb County Grand Jury process. Every two months, a grand jury is seated, or at least pre-COVID, a grand jury was seated whereby they do an audit of the DeKalb County Government Services. And it's interesting to read those presentments month after month after month where it's the same issues over and over and over again, where DeKalb County doesn't fix the problems being identified by citizens who are volunteering to serve on the grand jury. A lot of them, there were the jail problems. The jail problems were identified year, month after month, after year after year, and until finally, DeKalb County was forced to make some changes. I will send you an email later tonight on all the presentments and the DeKalb County Grand Jury findings from the last couple of years, just as a watchdog, something that you should, you know, for accountability aspect, it all falls on your shoulders. So, if you could, just something, something light reading.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's great. Thank you. I'd love to read that.
All right, that's it. So, thank you. A pleasure meeting you.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, John.
Okay.
All right. Hey, thank you. Just miscellaneous stuff. The Ethics Board that just stood up, the new Ethics Committee, how do you see that not repeating the past? Any thoughts about helping making sure that there's, I know it's officially independent, but what's, do you really feel that they're going to be successful? Are they, are they aimed, can they go into what's going on inside of the county and really look at things? And are they empowered? And who's been appointed on the board and so on?
Yeah, they had their first meeting on, was it Thursday? It was Thursday. It was a long meeting. There's like 30-something cases, I think, maybe more actually, that are sort of been backlogged. But no, I think that is, the issue of just them being able to function has been solved. And so, you're right. The board is fully constituted, has alternates. They have two staff members. They're bringing on another executive assistant that are, that isn't an additional, it is not an additional budget request. But they're going to make it work this year. But they might need to expand their staff, you know, depending on what's going on. But the way I see it, between Ms. Calbermann and then, I can't remember her, the other staff attorney, but very sort of processed. They do their due diligence. They do sort of the research. What they had last, last week was kind of sort of a, sort of a meeting before the meeting. So, there were some cases that they agreed that these have either no merit or no jurisdiction. There was a lot of no jurisdiction. So, someone's complaining about, you know, a manager. Well, that's an HR issue. Someone emailed about like a judge. Well, that's a different, you know. Someone asked about, you know, what about city council members? Well, you know, y'all have your own ethics code. So, it doesn't cover everything, but it does cover, I think, what the intent was. And that's the, you know, the county government. So, I feel good about it. It looked like they got some smart people on there and some inquisitive board members. I'm trying to think. I think Mr. Moskowitz, doesn't he live in Dunwoody? I feel like y'all are residents. Yeah, David Moskowitz. So, he's on there. He asked a lot of questions. So, he's, he'll be on it. So, yeah, I feel good about it. But, you know, we got to keep, keep watching it. And if, I would encourage anyone to check a meeting out just because you'll see kind of how they operate. And they're going to, there are new, a lot of new members who kind of are asking, you know, procedural questions and what should we do in this case and that. So, I think once they get their legs under them and they feel comfortable, they'll be really rolling.
Prior to your getting on the, on the county there, I want to thank the CARES Act funding that was disbursed to the cities. I want to really thank DeKalb County for doing that above and beyond from last year. That really helped because we were able to help our local businesses and nonprofits and so on. Really totally thank you. Now, we got another version of whatever's going to come up forward. That's all kind of in a state of flux, of course. We'll find out what is what hopefully in the coming weeks. But obviously, I'm sure that our staffs, if there's any way of partnering and helping the communities mutually, that would be, you know, totally appreciated.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, I fully support the, that per capita distribution from the 149 million to the various entities, city and county. And I believe, you know, y'all have been doing a good job, I believe. But, you know, not everyone has done very good reporting. So, you know, let's just make sure everyone, I think y'all are good on this, but reporting back what you spent the first round of funds on, very helpful because obviously, like, we have, like, we're going to be held accountable for how it's spent. So, not everyone did that. It's kind of like, people are kind of looking to the side, saying, well, we're going to have some different, additional, you know, conditions attached to it. But generally speaking, absolutely. We want to keep that going.
I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but obviously, we, between the county and the cities, we don't manage the schools, but schools are a big issue. And if there's any way of partnering, of really working together, collaborating, and county-wide, across an all of a bit of effort on our overcrowding issues and the quality of these schools and return to school and so on, right? We're speaking to the choir here.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, look, I mean, I know, you know, every, every city has its own sort of economic development sort of issues and plans. And not every city has development authority, but y'all have one in Brookhaven and Chambly. And I think Clarkson's got one, Stonecrest has one, Decatur has one. And so, a couple of points to kind of consider on that front, Joe. Number one, I believe it was maybe two years ago, with the encouragement of Commissioner Rader, the doubt, the Decide DeKalb Development Authority, the County Development Authority, has a position on there that is sort of a representative of DeKalb Municipal Association, you know, city representative. I think it would be great if we had a school board representative on the Decide DeKalb Board. There is a vacancy right now. When it comes to tax abatements, they're the biggest piece of the property tax puzzle. And so, any abatements that, you know, we look at between cities and counties, you know, our impact is a little bit less compared to their impact. So, you know, we have to make sure that we balance that out and that we're seeing, you know, economic growth. But we don't want to do it too much so that we were at the expense of our children. So, I would just, you know, flag that as something. And then, I will mention that the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education are planning a joint meeting in May. I think it's maybe the fifth or sixth time we've tried to do this over 15 years. So, we're going to really, we're going to focus, we're actually trying to get something out of it this time and talk about ways that we can work together because I think that is something that's been missing. And then, finally, again, just, you know, between, you know, your local development authority, really, really encourage, I think the school board is becoming kind of more aware of sort of the broad sort of array of different types of tax abatement, you know, sort of schedules that are out there, you know, the standard 10-year abatement, 50% in year one, down by 5%, you know, until year 10. We start mixing 20-year abatements, 25-year abatements. Then you start getting into some territory that, you know, deserves a little bit closer consideration. And I would really encourage y'all to be proactive in reaching out to the school board and asking their opinions on some of these things. Not saying they're going to, you know, veto anything, but I think that upfront conversation, I think, would go a long ways in assuring that exactly what you thought.
And last, last one. So, you're on the PWII infrastructure. Does that also deal with, I was saying, you said roads. Does that mean transportation?
Transportation, transit.
Does it, does it?
Sanitation.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, like, you know, Atlanta, last year or two, they created a new Department of Transportation. I don't know if y'all are thinking about that too, but you have that sole, sole focus of how people and goods move. You have that infrastructure baseline, right? But let's have a talk, coffee and talk because you look at the bus rapid transit accommodations on 285 express lanes. We have trails, holistic viewpoint of working on the top end together, collaborating across the counties and the cities here. Transportation as a superset of that.
Yeah, absolutely. Does everyone feel good about how the SPOLOX projects have gone? That's sort of our first, you know, city-county cooperative on transportation infrastructure.
Yes. So.
Thanks.
Our SPOLOX, we pretty much are, our projects within our city. We don't have a lot of, because we're totally surrounded by cities. We don't have a lot of county overlap. But we're happy with our SPOLOX projects. We're happy with the program, I think. Stacy.
I just want to say, welcome and thank you and look forward to working with you.
Pam.
Yes. Hello, welcome. And I look forward to getting to know you better. And we'll have coffee, some, no urgent, you know.
You got here for four years.
There you go.
But let's do it sooner than later.
Yeah, yeah. And also, when Robert Patrick was here at our last meeting, I let him know about the Dunwoody Fourth of July Parade. I cheer the parade. And so, I would like to take this opportunity to invite you to participate as one of our elected officials. You're invited. And I can get you a car and driver if you need.
Absolutely. And if you need anyone to cook hot dogs, I will be happy to volunteer.
Oh, that would, that would be the Dunwoody Rotary, and that would be.
Oh, good. All right. Vegan dogs and, or, you know, kosher dogs.
Thank you, Ted. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Ted, welcome to Dunwoody. Thanks for coming out. Two things I want to emphasize, you know, getting back to the, you know, to Public Works and in particular, the sewer system, you know, we've got the consent decree. But I want you to, you know, to make sure you focus on how that affects economic development because, you know, it creates a whole whale of a lot of uncertainty, you know. We, you know, and if you've got any comments on where we're at in the whole consent decree process and how that's looking, I'd be curious to hear them. But, you know, there's just a, you know, when a developer goes to build something new and they don't know how long it's going to take or if they're going to get through the process with the cab watershed management, you know, that uncertainty is really bad, you know, for the process. And it makes them potentially look elsewhere. So, the extent that you can, you know, create more certainty and reduce the amount of time that process takes, that's good for economic development. So, there's a challenge for you. So, that's my, that's my two cents worth on, you know, the consent decree and that aspect of what you'll be doing in the committee. My other comment that I want you to be aware of, it's not your committee responsibility, but it's a public safety thing, and that's ambulance response. That's been an issue for us for quite a long time. And it's, you know, you would have thought it would have gotten better with COVID because of traffic, but it didn't. And maybe that has to do with wall time, you know, at the hospitals. But the bottom line is that the ambulance contractor is not coming close to meeting contracted response times. And I just don't understand it and why there hasn't been more done to hold their feet to the fire. So, there's another challenge for you. Well, and again, I know that's not your committee responsibility, but it's something you should be aware of that's out there. So, that's, that's my two.
Well, I'll defer on that second item because I need to get more research on that. But I am aware of what you're referring to. And yes, there have been some discussions. And then, on the water about the consent decree, yeah, the consent decree is, I think, a pretty generous one. There, the EPA, I think, has forgiven a lot of the mistakes. They put a couple of million dollars in fines in there. And they've sort of laid out that if you keep making the mistakes, the fines just get even worse. But for the most part, we've been giving, given a very good opportunity to kind of make up. And so, we've got seven years in that consent decree to prove that we're doing, we're making progress. And absolutely, it's, you know, it's for, in a lot of ways, it is economic development. And I think if developments, whether they're housing, office, commercial, whatever it may be, industrial, if they can't get those water and sewer taps, then ain't nothing going to happen. Of course, the EPA's major concerns are environmental. You know, that's the crux. Of course, the EPA's major concerns are environmental, you know, that's the, the crux of the consent decree. But again, this is the, the benefit of working on this will improve economic development. So, you know, when I throw out over $1 billion, you know, it's not like $1 billion right now, but it's in the rate base. And so, you know, as new projects come online, you know, those projects will be paying into the rate base. So it, it kind of works to where you, you want to see more economic development because you have more rate pairs, which means it sort of supports the rest of the system. And, and I think that, I think that we were really at the very beginning of this journey. And if anyone was, is interested, when I first, you know, came into the Maluif Building in January, they gave me a book that was this thick. And it is the, the capital improvement program. And I will say I, I am, I am impressed that it seems that we are, we have addressed some of the modeling issues. So the last time a, a model was done, or the last time a major one was done was during oh five, oh six, and that's was during a drought. And so that's, if y'all remember, the big talk was fat soils and greases. And the model showed that because we had really, you know, for years, very low rainfall. But now that precipitation has, you know, has increased and we're not in the dry spell, it has revealed all the other issues with the sewer system. And so we kind of, you know, just looking back, not trying to like, you know, blame anyone, but looking back on it, that was the, that was the key mistake that was made. We focused too much on the fog issue when it's not just the fog, it is the, the, the literal disintegration of some pipes, the intrusion of root systems, the, you know, not maintaining the easements so that roots were intruding. And so that's that kind of, to me, it sort of explains like, okay, how do we screw it up the first time? Okay, well, we just completely identified the wrong problem. And so now that this new model they're using, Mr. Lee Judd, he sort of comes to PWI like every week now. And he, he'll be happy to give a present, if y'all are interested, give a presentation. He's got lots of maps and it's all very helpful when you see maps and you see where the trunk lines are going to go and how all that works. Because you can really visualize sort of what's actually happening and he can kind of go through the modeling that they've done. You know, it's supposed to be this, the most like state of the art model that's out there. So I think we've got the right people and the right expertise now in, you know, in the program. And so I think we're on, off to a good start, but got to stay with it, stay on them. Thanks, Jim.
Whoops, there we go. Thanks, thanks for being here tonight. And I'm looking forward to our meeting on Thursday and getting to know you a little better one-on-one. And got a few issues I'll save for that day, but, but just a couple of things related to your role on the, the PTI committee there. And, um, you know, I, I think it's great also that your experience is, is mayor and at the cap city. You, you certainly will have an appreciation for the interaction between the municipalities and the county. One, one of the issues with, with, with the water department, I'd just like to bring up to you and, and hopefully we can search for something that might improve the service level. I think that, I think the water department, when there's an emergency repair, I think they do a good job with the immediate responsiveness in, in getting the repair fixed. Where they're lacking is in the follow-up. And I know we've got a couple of issues that I'm well aware of right now that are going on in six months with big, big giant steel plates in the road or someone's front yard has holes all over it. You know, we've reported this to the county and we, we've been told it's going to be addressed. And, and I don't know if it's different departments that are handling the, the, the finish work. But it would certainly would appreciate anything that the county can do on the follow-up from the initial repair to making sure that the area is returned to its initial condition is, you know, as quickly as possible. Because, you know, sometimes it's just cosmetic, but sometimes it is more, more important than that. Yeah. So anything you could do to, to help that would be great. And I have, I have a few specific spots that I'll, I'll send you separately if you could follow up with that. And then, and then also just related to the airport, you know, a lot of people don't think about the airport necessarily with Dunwoody because it's not located within the city, but certainly there's an impact, especially with the flight patterns and everything. And I know the FAA is going to handle the, the traffic patterns and stuff. But the other thing I'd ask is just if there's anything coming down the pike at the airport runway expansions or anything like that, that may have an impact on the surrounding communities and certainly Dunwoody is very close to that. Would appreciate the heads up so that we can be involved in that from the very beginning and, and, and see how we might navigate through that. That would, that would be a, a big help for us. But thanks for coming tonight and like I said, look forward to digging in a little deeper on Thursday morning.
Yeah, much more to come on the airports. There, there was a master plan, master planning process that was started last year. And the, I believe it is still being worked on, however, I'm told that it is getting close to sort of, you know, presentation mode for the public. So I'll definitely make sure y'all are aware of that. You know, one thing about, I'll just mention about the airport that I've come to learn. One, it, it does generate a fair amount of property tax. You know, every, all those planes and all that equipment there is, you know, tied to the ad valorem tax. And so it does yield a significant amount of revenue for the county, which I think is in itself an important, you know, part of our fiscal sort of, you know, realities. Another thing that I think has been kind of that, you know, I'm, I'm sort of sensing is that, you know, part of the allure of, of PDK is that it's, it's where it's located. And, you know, as you mentioned, where it's located is near a lot of residential areas, which obviously has its negative impacts. But when you think about, I don't know, maybe a State Farm, and you think about site selection, you know, this is, this is a big part of the equation of attracting in those corporate headquarters where a CEO might want to fly in and be at the headquarters in 10 minutes. You know, I don't know, you know, door to door in 10 minutes, they say. And that along the way, it's, you know, like, wow, look at where I'm at. So that's a whole of this with corridor and, you know, sort of welcoming atmosphere. So there's, there's a lot of economic benefits, I think, to the larger region that PDK provides. And I think, you know, it's, it's, it's a matter of making sure there, there certainly are some issues. I wouldn't say that the, there's any plans to expand the airports. But in the, you'll see in the master plan, there are some safety concerns the FAA has brought up and part of the discussion. And again, I'm looking to get into it because it's so, it's very complicated. I'm still trying to learn about it is about extending one of the runways a little bit further for that safety buffer. Of course, if you talk to some folks, they'd say, well, that's the sneak, the sneaky way of getting more or larger airplanes on there. So then again, this is where we have to make sure everyone's got a clear understanding of the facts and what the, the protocols are. But I will say that the master plan is really important to finish because the FAA will not provide grants to do some of the improvements that are needed. For instance, the, the main administrative building was built in 1939. And, you know, Mario Evans and his team are still like little window units in the, you know, for AC and heat. And then there's a boiler room. And if you have the office near the boiler room, it's literally 100 degrees every day, even in the winter. There's always weird things, but a lot of history there, a lot of interesting stories to be told. There's discussion of a museum, obviously that's another story because who's going to run the museum? But I think absolutely, you know, even though it's not in your jurisdiction, it's in Chambly. All the surrounding communities to PDK are impacted by it. So absolutely, let's, let's keep talking about it. Yeah, thanks, Tom.
Ted, thank you for coming. If you could make sure that we have your chief of staff's contact information, if you want to email me that and whoever else on your staff you think we need to be in contact with, if there's an issue, you know, if we have questions or whatever, how we should contact you. I'll make sure everybody on council gets it, or you can just email council members at dunwoodyga.gov and that works too. Just one of my priorities and the other mayor's priorities is trail connectivity. And hopefully we can all work together. Commissioner Patrick was at the Peachtree Gateway Meeting the other day, talking about how we make sure that we're not overlapping with each other and funding the same piece seven different ways. Or so we're, we're going to have to work on some coordination, but eventually the top end path should connect all across the perimeter, actually then around the perimeter. That's the goal to do the 60-mile loop. And so, but short-term, it's the top end from say Dunwoody to Tucker or Sandy Springs to Tucker, or eventually Cumberland to Tucker or in a little further east than that. So, you know, we're counting on you to help us coordinate all that. And additionally, we're going to invite Chief Fulham to come speak to us at an upcoming meeting about our ambulance situation. It has gotten worse in part probably because of COVID and the wait time at the hospitals. But we need a plan, we need to under, if it's worse for us, it must be terrible in parts of the county because we were always. Yeah, so, so I think that that's a data point commission should be paying attention to. We have a contract, you have a contract with AMR. Additionally, on my list is to invite the water and sewer people to come speak to us. And I'll make sure you, you and Robert know when those meetings are in case you want to join us. Because for economic development purposes, water and sewer is really key, as is the PDK Airport. And so we look forward to working with you on all that. And once again, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mayor Council. My emails are easy, it's ted@dekalbcountyga.gov.
That's pretty cool.
Between me and my, and my district coordinator, Kelly Cato, who worked for Commissioner Gannon, she's still on, I brought her on board. So, yeah, we, between Kelly and me, we'll, we can coordinate those follow-ups. And I will absolutely help, you know, support the, and have a watershed and, you know, water and sewer coming and giving you a presentation. Because that's, that's an important one for y'all to know about.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, take care.
Counsel, if I could have a moment of privilege, please. I'd like to have Richard introduce the community development staff via, if, if anyone, do I need to amend the agenda to do that? Bill, do I need to amend the agenda to do that? I don't even see Bill Riley on my screen. Here he comes.
I'm on, Mayor, I just had to unmute.
Okay.
If you're just taking a point, personal privilege, I don't think that that's going to be a problem.
Okay, I'm taking a point of personal privilege as mayor because we have a new community development partner collaborative. And because we're not in, physically in the same place very often, I thought we would get to see them and maybe briefly introduce them. Thank you, Richard, take it away.
All right, everybody can turn your screens on so we can see you. Let me start by introducing Allegra DeNoyer. She's a planner.
Richard, can you speak a little bit?
Can you hear me?
A little louder.
Okay, next is Amy Bledsoe, she's our arborist. Armani Stein, she's our permit technician. Donna Sullivan, he's our building official. Grace Zhang, she's a planner.
Hello.
Hello.
And I think everybody knows Jeff Harris, he's our code enforcement officer. He was one of the only people to stick around. You also know Lori Warigo, our business license person. Madeline Smith, she's our senior planner. Richard Fernandez, he's our city engineer.
Hello, everybody, pleasure to be here.
Hello.
And Shane Peoples, he's our code enforcement supervisor.
It's not letting me, says the host to stop my video, so.
We can hear you at least, so.
And also, most of you have met Paul Niedehardt. He is our planning and zoning director and my assistant community development director. So this is all the people. Most of the staff is from collaborative, some of them are from Nova, building inspections. So they're all welcome.
We welcome you to Dunwoody. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, thank you all for sticking around so that at least now, um, city council will have a face with a name when they see emails until we can all be in the same place again easily. So thank y'all very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel, for allowing me that point of privilege. Now we're on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have questions or comments about the two items? Go ahead, Joe.
Just a point, I confirmed with Jay on the CARES Act funding, it says household hazardous waste, but it also includes specifically electronics or paint and the whole other thing. So it's a, it's an umbrella. Thank you.
Moved to pass the consent agenda, second.
Moved by Jim, second by John. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sharing that passage unanimously. I think I can do this because it's not a business item. Next up, we have a discussion item. I think Mr. Thomas or Mike, I see Michael Smith, I don't know exactly who's presenting this.
Yes, Carl's going to present this, but I wanted to take a minute to recognize Carl. Last week he took a.
Oh, wait, Michael, we're losing you. Michael, can you start over because your internet is chopping.
Came certified by the, as a.
Can you start over, Michael, because we lost you.
Can you hear now?
Yes.
Is that better?
Yes.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I, I wanted to recognize Carl, last week he passed an exam and became certified as a stormwater manager by the American Public Works Association. And he's only the third person in Georgia to have this certification. And there's only 70 in the entire country. Even more significant, he's, he already had a certification as a floodplain manager. And so we think he, he's the only one in Georgia that has both certifications and only a handful in the whole country. So it was something he did on his own initiative and I just wanted to recognize him before he presented.
All right, before you present, Carl, we have to give you a round of applause.
Thank you, thank you.
Can't leave. So, all right, go right ahead with this item, please.
Okay, this will be real brief and let me know if you can't see my screen. Can everybody see my screen, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The following, okay, yeah, the following item on the agenda is a stormwater repair for 1751 Ball Mill Court. The total summary of the repairs of replacing about three, approximately 320 linear feet of pipe via cured and placed pipe. The project was initially reported to us when a homeowner had a service request about a sinkhole that had formed in the junction box located between their property and the home at 1750, 1739 Ball Mill Court. The reason why this wasn't, the reason why the city wasn't aware of the condition of the pipe, this is kind of similar to the old Spring House project that we discussed a few weeks back. All of these structures, particularly this one right here, right there at the corner of the driveway and this one, and this green junction box shown right here between 1730, 39 and 1751, they were both buried structures. So the city was unable to perform their typical good, good housekeeping inspections to, you know, check the condition of the infrastructure. And this particular pipe was, had never been inspected by the city because it was, it was inaccessible. Once we were able to get the easement agreement signed by the three property owners, we were able to go in there with some light equipment, uncover those structures and perform a thorough CCTV inspection of the whole system. Found numerous deficiencies, numerous voids in the invert, holes, corrosion. This area right here, there's actually a longitudinal crack in this area right here underneath the driveway. So that section is actually going to have to be dug out and we're going to have to replace that section of the driveway. And downstream, there's a separated section at the end of this particular pipe system that we're going to have to replace a small section as well. These are some photographs from the inspections, the CCTV inspections. You can see the separated joint between 1739 and 1751. The junction, the buried structure that's right in the corner of 1752 Ball Mill Court. It's a very small structure and it's, will be very difficult to put that CCT, CIPP liner in it. So we're going to have to, you know, put an actual precast structure once the repairs are done as well. You can see the corrosion, the inverts are completely, and the structures. Sinkhole located between 1739 and 1751. If approved by council, the total cost of the repairs plus 20% contingency is $82,0236.90. That's pretty much it and I'm opening up to any questions that you may have.
Thank, thank you very much. Anybody have a question? Comment?
Throw it as usual and consent agenda.
Right, I agree. Right, I agree with consent agenda. I have a quick question. Mr. Thomas, is the budget for the driveway repairs sufficient?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes, yes, that is part of the estimate.
Okay, all right, anything else? Any, everybody okay with consent next time? All right, it'll be on consent at the next meeting.
Thank you.
So much, and congratulations again. We are all very proud of you and impressed. Thank you. With that, I will, public comments. Again, anyone here seeing none? Ginger, can you check to see?
If, if anyone would like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. All right, council comments. Oh, wait, city manager comments. I'm sorry, I missed it. City manager comments. Eric, go ahead.
All right, Mayor, thank you. Thank you very much. The, all right, on this, want to use this opportunity again to give a shout out to the staff for assisting in putting this document together. Has a lot of good information in here for both the city council and the public. Just briefly going through the report, Public Works, the Peeler Road Sidewalk Project and the Tilly Mill Sidewalk Project are coming along nicely. Hopefully y'all have had the opportunity to look at the Spalden and Chamley-Dunwoody project. Is it moving rapidly on construction? Last week, everything was a little bit delayed because of the rain. But this week, the weather looks good, the front half of the week, and these projects are continuing on. In the police department, we did conduct a distracted driving detail, and we had about 29 citations that were issued with that detail. Just as an awareness to the public, we want to be sure that people are following the traffic laws and not driving distracted and causing accidents and things. Also, we did assist the Brookhaven Police Department with the presidential visit to the CDC when they were, and setting that up and setting all that stuff up. You know, we have to go through protocols with those cities to assist. And that's part of our partnership when another city calls to assist on any kind of setup for national type events. Also, the license plate reader system that we put in place, I know I talk about that quite often, but I do want you, when you read the report, it is amazing how that investment is paying off in terms of assisting with crime. The Parks Department, Donaldson-Bannister Farm, second floor structural reinforcement work is on schedule to be completed next month. And all the plumbing has been completed, and the electrical is about 50% completed on that project. The Waterford Tennis resurfacing is complete. Electrical for the site lights is 85% complete, and the pavilion roof is 95% complete. So that project's coming on as well. We're also, this week, will begin work to get the little creek functioning at Brook Run Park seasonally. We do turn that off in the winter months, and so we want to get that going along with the Georgetown Park Fountain. So those things are, we're working on getting all of our park stuff back up and operational as we come out of winter. The community development, 206 building permits inspections, excuse me, not permits inspections. Over the past two weeks, 78 new permits in that department. We, economic development, the Dunwoody Art Commission approved the first public art proposal with a mural to be installed at the front entrance of the Spruill Center for the Arts. The commission continues to work on the annual public art plan for this year and for next year. So that plan can, we can hopefully have a vision to complete that program. The retention calls and recruitment calls, 41 business retention calls and 15 business recruitment calls over the past couple of weeks. And that department, the economic development, continues to monitor the federal program for new monies that are coming down from Washington. Communications, the Dunwoody Digest is, will be released on April the 1st, which will cover April through June. That's coming out. We also have the Parks and Recreation Microsite on the web to launch that, which has the expanded calendar and parks and partner events. And that's something that we've been working on for a while, something that y'all had asked for, to have a little bit more calendar events on the web. And also, within that page of the document, you'll see there's a little drawing there. It talks about your city government at work. And this is something that, in working with Jennifer, that we wanted to put in an illustration for the public to show what's been done during the pandemic. And it's a cool little display when you have a chance to take a look at it. And it just shows the number of, the number of, it gives a numbered report of the projects we've been working on during that time and how your government, that's the purpose of it, your government continues to operate in the pandemic. Finance, our new auditor, Malden and Jenkins, this is the external auditor. Began remote work for the year-end from last year for 2020. And also, the financial report is part of the document that I sent out tonight. But it's also a link within this, within this report. The final thing I'll talk about just briefly is municipal court. And I know I'll brag on municipal court that we've kept that operational. In the past two weeks, we disposed of 107 cases and reset 29 cases. So all that is operated smoothly. I'm glad to answer any questions the council may have as well as staff is available. And glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? John?
Eric, thanks for the update. Is there any update on the sense of reopening, slowly reopening, events reopening? Our brand new amphitheater, something going on? Is there any update as to when things are going to be changing for the better?
Right, and that's just what we're doing there. It's a little bit of a, we do have some internal goals we would like to hit, but it's all based on the numbers with the pandemic. And also, we are carefully monitoring what other areas are doing, what other municipalities, what other counties, what other facility events halls are doing. And it's something that we'd love to open tomorrow, but we want to do it in a safe fashion and at the right time. And so, but that is, it's on the radar. Hopefully that answers your question, that we want to bring that as soon as it's feasibly possible.
Great, thank you.
I think the next check-in is March 31st, right, Eric?
That's right.
Anybody else? So just a shout out to Jennifer and Kathy for the graphic that they did. I actually got lots of compliments on it. People thought it was really clear. Somebody stopped, several people stopped me at the farmer's market to compliment us on it, and I appreciate everyone's good work. And with that, no other questions. We can transition to council comments. Okay, we do need executive session for the purpose of real estate and legal, correct, Eric?
That is correct.
Moved to exit for executive session for purposes of real estate and legal.
Second, moved by Jim, second by Pam. Any further discussion? Seeing none, signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sharing that passage unanimously. And we will be back.
There's four.
We got five.
Five.
One wants me to return, so uh... You good?
We're good.
We're good.
Want to do a journey?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Goodnight everyone.
Night.
Bye.
Go buff.